We're going to call the meeting into order. Carol will have a call for quorum. Here. Here. Thank you, Carol. So I ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add public comment after the superintendent's proposed budget presentation.
The motion by Mr. Grippo is to add a public comments section after Section 2 of the superintendent's presentation. Is there a second?
Second.
Andrew Martelli seconds it. Any quick discussion?
Yeah, well, we see there's a lot of people in attendance tonight, and we've reasonably believed people may would like to discuss the presentation, so.
Thank you. Any other comment on the motion? The motion is to add a public comments section after Section 2 after superintendent's presentation. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone out there tonight. This is a very nice turnout for a budget. Usually, it's the most -- for me, it's not, but here's the most boring part of our process. So to see so many folks out here tonight, although I think folks are here for more than just the budget. Thank you for coming out. Tonight is a business meeting. We will all, up here at the Board of Ed as well as on the public, get to see the first deep dive into superintendent's proposed 2021 -- I'm sorry, 2020 -- 2021 operating budget presentation. Having said that, we're going to watch a fairly efficient presentation by the superintendent. The screen's going to come down. We can actually watch it from both sides, so if the board members want to sit up here, you're welcome to. I think I'm going to go up to the front and take a seat. So having said that, I ask the board members to choose your seat. And Mr. Solent, Superintendent Solent, you got the mic.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Perugini, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for that warm welcome. That's good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perugini, again. I'd like to take this opportunity, really, as we kick off, as Mr. Perugini said, the 2021 budget, which seems a little sci-fi number to me, but as we kick off the 2021 budget, I really want to just take a moment here to thank all of our principals, supervisors, central office staff, our PPS staff, and everyone who was involved in this process. It takes a lot of work and consideration to put this forward before our members of the Board of Education. And I'd like to especially thank Mr. Maciana, our Chief Operating Officer, who spent countless hours trying to crunch numbers and preparing this kind of luminous book of budget materials for our board and the community this evening. I also need to thank his executive assistant, Heather Santee, our finance director, Greg Gibbons, my executive assistant, Carol Juzenski, our coordinator of school and community relations, Kelly Lenz, Assistant Superintendent Marlene Solano, and PPS Director Tracy Hussey, in particular, for all of their incredible work in the budget preparation process. It really does kind of take a village to raise a budget here. I want to remind everyone that the budget process is really quite fluid, that we'll, you know, tonight make a presentation about our recommendations, and through the next month or so, the Board of Education will, you know, poke and prod and ask a lot of questions about the recommendations, and ultimately come up with their determination of what should be put forth to the town council. And they'll do so before February 15th, and ultimately before April 30th, the town council will approve whatever budget, you know, they feel is appropriate. We do have upcoming budget workshops, which will begin on Tuesday at Dodd Middle School at 7:00. Usually, our meetings for the budget process are held Tuesday and Thursday, and Kelly does a tremendous job with our social media accounts, and we'll continue to send that information out via social media and email and post it as well for the community, and we appreciate your participation in this process. It's very helpful. Finally, I want to let everyone know that this evening, the presentation that I'm going to share with you this evening and our complete budget book will be available on our website for you. So to kick off the process here, I just want to talk a little bit about the board member responsibilities in the process. This is dictated by statute, and really asks that local boards of education provide an appropriate learning environment for all students, which include adequate instructional materials, supplies, facilities, et cetera, equitable allocation of resources among its schools, proper maintenance of facilities, and a safe school setting. We obviously have a deep commitment to provide a quality education and recognize how critical that is for our students. And frankly, you know, I think our school system is the core of our community, and we take that responsibility seriously and try and provide a tremendous value as well for our community. So what is my responsibility as superintendent in this process? I really try and work with our educational leaders in the district and develop an appropriate educational budget that provides equitable experiences between schools, again, just meets those standards that were set forth for the board. And, you know, as part of that responsibility, we're both, along with our administrative team, both very sensitive to how do we forward our goals and do so in a way that's fiscally responsible. Back in 2010, during the 2010-11 school year, goals were established as part of the Cheshire strategic planning process. They were designed to be 10-year goals. In my first year as superintendent back in 2016, I recommended that we focus in on what was really most important to our community. So we spent a lot of time, visited with PTAs across the district, met with community business leaders, teachers, administrators, students, and really focused in on what is most important to us as a community. And at the end of the day, the board ultimately determined that complex thinking and social-emotional learning, after all that feedback, what is most critical for us as a school system. So I did mention it was 2010-11 that we established those 10-year goals. So next year, 2020-21, will be a year that we kind of reflect on those goals and start to focus on what do we want over the next 10 years. But once we establish the complex thinking and social-emotional learning, we really have used that as a filter to drive our decision-making and our budget process over the last several years. So what do we provide through our education budget? We have approximately 4,300 students who we provide a myriad of resources for. Oftentimes, it's a meal at least or two a day, health services, transportation, education, of course, as well as diverse experiences to pursue outside of that academic experience. So it's really pretty broad and far-reaching what we try and accomplish, and this is why we provide it. We provide support to those 4,300 students every day, and we try and keep them at the center of everything that we do. And I don't think, you know, this picture couldn't illustrate that any better, that our students are at the center. So reflecting on our path, as I mentioned, social-emotional learning and complex thinking. Social-emotional learning, over the course of the last several years, we've added a school counselor back in 1718. We've added a social worker at that time as well at the middle school in early release days to focus on mindfulness. And at the time, what we looked at was the ratio of students to mental health provider was 17th out of 18 DIRD-B-K-12 school systems. DIRD-B is an acronym for District Reference Group, the state identified, like communities to Cheshire. So, you know, just for example, we're talking about Glastonbury, Madison, Simsbury, Newtown, West Hartford, so similar school communities to what you would consider Cheshire to be. And we were next to last in that group for mental health providers. As of today, or excuse me, as of last year, anyway, we are 12th with respect to the number of students we have per mental health provider, and we consider that to be a really critical factor for our students. Last year, we did add three school psychologists. That doesn't factor into that ranking of 12, so I think one could assume that our ranking is even better now in that respect. When it comes to complex thinking, we added an elementary and middle school math coach during the last school year, which has paid tremendous benefits. We also extended Spanish into sixth grade during that year. And last year, we initiated extensive learning walks. They're called where we bring teachers from each -- at each elementary school, teachers, cluster of teachers, go visit other elementary school classrooms and observe specifically for complex thinking and instruction. We do the same in middle and high school, but only having one middle and high school, we don't travel anywhere, we just do it within the building. And our teachers have said it's been, you know, the most valuable professional development that they've ever had, and that they get to see so much of, you know, what great instruction looks like. It stretches their instruction and is even better for our students. So we've been focused on those two areas, like I said, over the last several years. So the budget environment, there are, you know, a myriad of factors that impact how we design our school budget. You know, in this process, we'll talk about things such, you know, as contracted salary increases and medical benefits escalation, special education costs, different contractual needs that we have, you know, whether it be cleaning or transportation. We also talk a little bit about some of the external factors that impact our budget. So internally, we're looking at things like student enrollment, salaries, and vendor contracts. With the vendor contracts, one of the, you know, driving factors that might have received more public attention is the increase in the minimum wage. So minimum wage increased to $11 an hour back on October 1st of 2019. It will increase every 11 months until it reaches $15 an hour, and that is something that impacts our vendors, it impacts us as a school system, so it's a consideration that we have as we develop a budget. Special education costs are obviously a factor, and with our medical benefits, you'll see in this budget that that's a significant issue that we are trying to tackle. We are self-insured, and our medical claims for our employees have been actually pretty good. And what we've been relying on is a trust fund balance to make up the difference between what we budgeted, less than the claim rate, in order to lessen the financial impact last year. And this year, one of the things that we're looking to do is budget at that claim rate so we don't continue to deplete our reserves in that account. So the initial internal request that was identified when we meet with our administrative team, we talked about, you know, what is it that, you know, we would be looking to build into our program was 7.6%. Now, that's not really fiscally reasonable. That's -- that wouldn't work. So, you know, we look through, you know, what is most critical, obviously. We pare that down. With respect to our history, the last four years, on average, our budget has been -- our approved budget rate has been 1.47%. That's the lowest four-year average since 1976. So in that time, we've had to really, really be lean. And I talked already about what our focus has been. It's about complex thinking and social-emotional development. And we've prioritized that, we've prioritized staffing because we really believe that the greatest impact for our students is the people that are in the room with those students and the staff that provide those supports. So over that four-year window, obviously, you know, you are forced to prioritize when it's as lean as it is. So some of the management strategies we use to, or I guess that influence, how do we manage that four-year window? And, you know, we do have a decline in enrollment. I'll talk about enrollment a little bit later, but I could just give you a quick highlight that as enrollment has declined, we've kind of stabilized now and are starting to enter a period, you know, plateau before projected incline in enrollment. Obviously, you know, 1.47 in contract increases exceeding that for services and in staff, you know, we keep a number of line items either the same or less than they were over the last five years. We try and engage in as many shared services as we can. For example, we partner with the Area Cooperative Educational Services. You might know them as ACES out of Hamden. And they support us in transportation. So if we have an out-ofplacement student, and let's say Wallingford has another out-ofplacement student, then we try and couple up our transportation to save on that cost, as opposed to having two districts drive one student, you know, 30 miles. Special education transportation is quite expensive, so we try and share services in ways like that. Sometimes we partner with districts for professional development services as well, and we're always looking for opportunities like that. Efficiencies, where we are, you know, similar to the shared services, finding efficiencies, maybe not with partner groups, but also in town. We do a lot of work with our partners, Sean Kimball, our town manager, thank you for coming tonight, and the work that we do with each other in a myriad of ways, whether it be energy efficiencies, or technology, or mental health, or a variety of ways that we try and support one another to really provide better opportunities for our kids at a lower cost wherever possible. One of the things I didn't really talk about in here, the offsets yet, and special education needs, the cost of special education is, it's not a Cheshire issue, it's really a Connecticut issue. The cost is really, really kind of exorbitant now, that, you know, the cost of outplacing students has gotten very expensive, and those students need our most support, and we deserve, they deserve to provide, to be provided with great service. So what we've tried to do is find more efficiencies in that regard. So rather than outplacing students, which we, you know, really try and avoid if possible, we think it's better that the student is educated in their community, where we can do that and meet their needs, we do so. And that's an area where we found great efficiency, and we, you know, I think, perhaps being a bit biased, we even provide better services in most cases, but the cost for that has gone up. This year, we had to add 6.7 IA positions to our budget to address the needs of students in our current school year. We're going to have to carry those services over next year, and that cost is roughly $165,000. You know, over the last five years, too, full-day kindergarten, we, in essence, doubled the number of kindergarten teachers. We think full-day kindergarten, it's worth making that commitment, obviously, but it does have an impact on us from a budgetary perspective. So really, you know, a couple of considerations in the development of our budget, you know, we can, there are certain things that we're trying to sustain in order to maintain the level of programming that we have today. There's, there are items that we look to restore. As I said, four years at 1.47%, we did have to cut some things in order to retain our focus on teaching and learning. And then what is it that we're, that we have in this budget in order to try and advance the experience of our students and the quality of our school system? So at the end of the day, after reviewing those things, and we came down from over 7% to 4.05% as a budget recommendation at this point. The recent history on budget recommendations, you can see at the far-right column, starting in 1617 with .96, .36, 2.16, and 2.39. Our budget increase, again, request this year is for 4.05%. So you can kind of get a sense of where that request is in our history, at least recent history. So where does the budget increase shake out in terms of percentages? The overall budget increase being a little bit more, a little bit less than $3 million. The bulk of that is contractual. The restoration of medical benefits, as I talked about a little bit earlier, and maintenance repairs is indicated really in the red. The 6.7 IAs that I talked about are included in that blue section for contractual increases, and I'll get into greater detail on this in a moment, but the 7%, roughly $200,000 of the increase, I don't think that's a huge number, but it's something that, you know, we think is important to increase the capacity and quality of our school system. So some of the budget highlights as it relates to advancement, you know, the ultimate goal of our financial plan here is to maximize student achievement and really prepare students for success beyond our school system. That's a real focus, obviously, as I mentioned, on complex thinking and social-emotional learning, but as well as our vision for the graduate that our board approved is in July. So how do we leverage our resources to better provide for that? And one of the areas that we are working on continuously is improving our school security. We work very closely with our law enforcement partners in Cheshire, our emergency services, the, both the chief of police and fire chief are, work very closely with us. Jack Kastner comes to every meeting religiously and helps us plan out what are we doing for building security. And one of the areas that we're looking at now is entryway security, and we have two elementary buildings where the entry level is at a different location, a different floor, really, than the main office. And so one of the things that we're going to address in our budget is providing two hall monitors, two security monitors for Norton and Chapman School, where those entries are on a different floor. We are requesting a .5 BCBA, and it's a board-certified behavior analyst. If you attended the really incredible presentation that we had at Highland Elementary School a couple of months back, we talked about special education services, and if you saw that presentation, or if you go back and watch it, you can kind of see how instrumental a BCBA is in providing support for students with special needs. And based on our needs, we feel that it's important to add that position. We are also requesting a .8 math support person at Dodd. That's a non-certified position, but provides intervention support under the direction of a certified teacher for students in mathematics. We added a math coach at Dodd last year, and you'll see momentarily that we've had tremendous growth and success, but we think that this will also help us continue that success and move forward. That position itself is a $25,000 investment for the year. A .1 FTE is, there are a zillion acronyms in education, like I guess most fields, but FTE is full-time equivalent. So a 1 FTE is, that's actually two half-time positions. One is for transition services for students 18 to 21, and the other is for our youngest population at Darcy. So we're bookends. And then finally, strategic planning. Next year, we want to spend a lot of time with our board, staff, students, and community, like we did in 1617, but go much, much deeper. And we are looking at having a facilitator help us with that process, and that's really going to be a deep dive into our schools and our community to set a new goal for us and how to move forward. So that would cost about $15,000 we're budgeting. Restoration of services, I think I've already talked a little bit about the medical benefit funding to match the expected claims rather than drawing off of our trust fund balance, as well as increasing maintenance, the maintenance budget to address repair needs. Now, the medical benefits piece would cost about $800,000 to match our claim rate, and the maintenance piece that we're asking for is about a $200,000 addition over our current maintenance and operations spending. Now, you know, I know that we are incredibly grateful for the School Modernization Committee, and here, Chairman of the Town Council, Mr. Horace, and other council members here this evening, Mr. Velliber, I don't know if I'm missing anybody else, but, and I think that work is absolutely critical and much appreciated. We've had more things break over the years, and it's, you know, you can't really budget for that, well, you try and budget for it, you don't know what it's going to be. And thankfully, we have a safety net, but each year, we are spending more on fixing things that break in our nearly 70-year-old, on-average, facilities. So I think, you know, when you look at the square footage, the $200,000 will help us in that respect. So our recommended budget, you can see that the 2021 request is $76,330,052. The change, as I said earlier, is roughly $3 million, and this graph helps outline where that budget is being spent. 80% of our budget roughly is on people. And again, I think that that's where we get the most bang for our buck, is really the people who are working closely with our students, family, and community to support student growth. God bless you. So line requests in detail, these are our really largest changes in our budget, with line item changes of $100,000 or greater. Teacher salaries is contracted, there's a contractual increase that's part of our contract with the teachers, at over $1 million for the nearly 400 teachers we have. Medical benefits, as I talked about, nearly $700,000. Building maintenance repair, nearly two. Building maintenance repair, nearly two. Instructional assistance salaries, that is the addition of, of a hundred and twenty-six thousand and tuition outplacement at a hundred thousand. These items represent in total about seventy-five percent of our overall budget increase. So here's where the increases shake out by category. You know, you can see, as, as you would imagine, the bulk is within staffing at, you know, seventy-five percent. The instructional expense, the, the increase there at two hundred and eighty-one, as we mentioned, about a hundred thousand of that is for outplacement tuition. I talked about finding efficiencies in, in providing programming in our school system. And you saw some of that at Highland during that aforementioned presentation. We are always trying to build on that to provide great experiences for our kids. But there are certainly times when the needs of the student require more intensive supports and outplacement is appropriate for that child, and so that those costs are ever increasing. So our projected revenues for the next academic year include educational cost sharing, funding from the state of Connecticut to the tune of a little more than nine million dollars. That number, sometimes you look at the ECS number with great trepidation. In the years where the state is trying to nail down a biennial budget, that number is really shaky. You're, you're hoping. This year, because we are in the second year of that biennial budget, there is a more confidence, I would say. You, you know, you never cash your chips, really, I guess, until you get the check from the state. But that, that number is something that we feel pretty confident about. Special education cost, that's the, the state factors in the cost of per pupil spending for your district. And when you spend four and a half times that cost for a student, every dollar in excess of that is credited to your district. At the end of the year, they take the entire pool of money that they've allocated, and they see what's the ratio between each community in Connecticut, and then they pay it out. It's usually underfunded to us by about thirty percent. So the revenue that, you know, we're kind of calculating for next year is four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in that program. Birth to three, we have an incredible birth to three program in Cheshire that not only services Cheshire, but some surrounding communities. This birth to three, this birth to three grant from the state, in essence, covers the cost of that for, for Cheshire. The school construction grants, that's old money, really. The state used to pay out school construction grants over long periods of time. So I don't know if that's from when we did the facade at the high school, but you can see it's not a tremendous amount of money, it's paid out over an extended period of time. We get magnet school transportation money. Our preschool smart start revenue basically covers the cost of providing preschool smart start, which has been a great opportunity for many families in our community, as well as adult education money. And we budget building rentals at, at ten thousand dollars. The, so this, this revenue here is money that we project, but the revenue itself does not come into our budget. So when you look at our budget, it's not less than ten million dollars. The, in essence, what we are spending is the, the seventy-six minus the ten million. That ten million goes directly to the town. So what if? There are certainly factors that, you know, other revenues and, and costs that are considerations for us. Our building use fees, our, our rental there is, last year, last academic year, it was thirteen thousand, two sixty-one, the bulk of which was paid by the YMCA for their before and after care programs. We have custodial reimbursement. Last year, we collected sixteen thousand, three hundred and ten. Now, that's for programs that are not run by the school, but run by community organizations where they use our facilities. We collected that amount last year. The, the actual billing amount is roughly about forty thousand dollars, much of which was collected after the, the academic year. We have participation fees, that's when students are participating in athletics. The total cost of that, seven through twelve, was a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in revenue. And CHS parking fees were about thirty-seven thousand. The money that's collected here goes directly into the services that are identified. So for, the rental fee would turn into maintenance. Custodial reimbursement is, is pretty self-explanatory. The custodians get paid an hourly rate when they do the work, supervising activities on the weekends. That hourly rate is paid back to them out of the money that's collected. We don't, we don't charge, we don't build in a cushion on that. We don't generate a profit or anything off that. It's basically, it's a one-for-one. Participation fees go back into athletic supplies. The CHS parking fees go back into maintenance center, on our parking lots. So the expenditure that we have, we use the pool to, last year, the tune of thirty, about thirty-four thousand dollars. So the, the grand total of the fees that we collect, if we did not collect those fees identified on the left, would be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So obviously, the budget before you is not a seven percent budget. And here are some of the things that we think would be tremendous supports for our school and community, but we also recognize that we can't present a seven percent budget. So a math interventionist, really like I talked about at the middle school, at the high school level, for about forty thousand dollars. The elementary technology coach position is something that we had considered several budgets ago. Unfortunately, haven't been able to fund that and move forward with that position. We have a middle and high school position that really support instruction, but also do other things with, as it relates to some of the state reporting we're required to do through technology. District-wide professional development, our administrators deliver probably ninety-five percent of our PD that occurs. And we don't pull in educational leaders to do that, really. So that's, that'd be an area that we would focus on. District-wide classroom furniture, our teachers are often asking for more flexible and mobile furniture and seating arrangements. We try and fulfill as many of those requests at the end of the year as, as we have money left to do so. But that's really a, a need that our teachers have expressed. Administrative supports, particularly at the elementary school in Humiston, would be incredibly valuable. Reading and math specialist requests have come in from Highland and, and Chapman, providing, coaching non-certified positions, providing remedial support for students. Staff Chromebooks are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly, or some portion thereof, if it's parceled out over time. Interactive flat panel displays, about ten years ago, we initiated to put a smart board in every room, which, you know, those have, have become really expensive to repair and replace. The other drawback, I think, with a smart board is that it's locked in a location. So it's, it's in one, on one wall. I remember when we first started putting them in, I was principal at Dodd, and, you know, we would walk around rooms with the teacher and go, what wall do you want it on? In, in instruction today, we're not, we're trying not to be that fixed. So what we're looking at now is interactive fa- flat panels that are portable and, and we can move around rooms to better support the, the instruction our teachers are aspiring to. Secretarial support, and then finally, additional athletic offerings. So, you know, there are a variety of sports that we, we could consider adding, whether it be, I know rugby has, has been something that has been proposed several times. Girls' ice hockey fencing has been proposed. So that's another area that, again, all of these things we think are important. But, you know, things that, you know, the board could consider. Projected enrollment for the Cheshire Public Schools, I talked about us kind of reaching a, a plateau point. Next year, K through, pre-K through twelve will be down a total of forty-seven students. This does not include the twenty-seven elementary, six middle school, and four high school open choice students that we have projected for next year. This year, we had twenty-eight to- total students projected. Next year, it's, it's thirty-seven. And we think it's a tremendous opportunity to include more students into our, our school system where we have open seats. These students come from New Haven, it's a little tough, those students, I give them all the credit in the world, they're committed. You have, if you think your bus comes early, their bus comes early, and they, they commit themselves to attend the Cheshire Public Schools. And for every student that we take on, we're reimbursed through the state for three thousand dollars per student to help, help offset costs. But the value is certainly much greater than the three thousand dollars that we collect. New England's School Development Council, they do enrollment projections for really a lot of districts across New England. And they look at birth rates predominantly. And what they've said is, you know, this fall, this past fall, there were a hundred and forty-four kindergarteners for every hundred births. Is opposed to only ninety-seven kindergarteners for every hundred births in twenty fourteen, fifteen. So you can see that we're starting to trend. Next year's grade one is expected to be about five point eight percent larger than last year's kindergarten class. So we're at the elementary school, starting that trend back up in enrollment at the lower level. Excuse me, at the lower portion of the slide, I know it might be difficult to see. After the next three-year window, they project increasing enrollment in grade K through five of a hundred and forty-one students, combined with an increase of enrollment, two hundred and sixty-seven students in grades K through eight, or six through eight, excuse me, and the decline of one pupil in nine through twelve. I don't know, let's talk about granular data. But you can kind of see, and that's why I think as a school modernization committee, we, we are looking at updated enrollment because it's critical to, you know, as we plan our facilities moving forward. So our projected student enrollment, this is in a two font for those of you at the back of the room. So this is for students, and again, everything will be available on our website, including this presentation. So you could, you could read it probably a little deeper later. But the birth year twenty fifteen, there were a hundred and sixty-eight births, you can, you can read it out. It basically outlines what was shared on that bigger slide with the enrollment projections moving forward. So how does that impact our staffing is the big question, you know? How does, how does our enrollment impact our staffing? So this current academic year, we had a class size average in the elementary grades of seventeen point nine with nineteen hundred and eighty-nine students enrolled. Next year, we have two thousand seven students enrolled at a class size average of eighteen point one. The number of teachers across the elementary grades throughout Cheshire would remain the same at a hundred and eleven. This is a perfect example of when I say budgeting can be kind of fluid, because if we had ten students move into fourth grade at, at Norton, we might have to look at, you know, shifting staff around the district. We might have to look at, look at adding a teacher. Sometimes we've had to do that to accommodate, you know, usually be accommodating bulges in, in areas where they were unforeseen. At the middle school level, on the bottom of this screen, grade seven enrollment next year would be slightly up from twenty-two point three student, oh, excuse me, from twenty-three point eight students in grade seven, it's, it's down to twenty-one point four. The grade eight is where it's actually moving up from twenty-two point seven students to twenty-four point one. So middle and high school count, teaching staff count, is the same with enrollment slightly down in those areas. At Dodd last year, we did reduce two point eight teaching positions. You can see kind of the class size trend data. We've historically been around eighteen students for the elementary grades around, although it's vacillated a little bit more in middle school, around twenty, twenty-three and a half, twenty-four, and roughly the same for the eighth grade. So the, the, last year, when we engaged with the personalized learning task force, one of the strong recommendations they had was to retain class sizes that we have today to the greatest extent possible. So that's incorporated in that request. So Cheshire High School staffing, there's a, a great website called EdSite that the state oversees. It's, it's all apples-to-apples comparisons about every school system in Connecticut, every school. And so it's easy to look up, how many general ed teachers are there in a building, how many students are there? Cheshire High School ranks twentieth out of twenty-one Durg B high schools with respect to how many students are there per teacher. So we're a little over sixteen students per gen ed teacher. At Dodd Middle School, the same ranking can be done. And there, we rank twenty-sixth out of thirty-two schools in Durg B, because there are some districts that have multiple middle schools in them. So that's why we have many more middle schools than high. Special education staffing for next year, that's really the only place where we have any staffing changes. As I indicated, six point seven instructional assistants had to be added during this academic year. Those positions are being covered over, or carried over, excuse me, to twenty twenty-one. We had to increase, as I mentioned, the point five at Darcy and point five for transition services, as well as that BCBA service. So our recommended net staffing changes, this is just a different representation of the information that I've already covered with you, the Norton Chapman hall monitors, the Darcy and QU positions, and math interventionist in, in particular, and the BCBA. So the recommended staffing changes slightly increases the overall elementary class size from seventeen point nine to eighteen point one. And Dodd, we, we covered as well from overall twenty-three point three to twenty-two point eight. Our staffing trend over history, because I, I get asked often, how come our enrollment has declined, but our staffing hasn't? I already talked a little bit about that with something, some reasons why some staffing has increased, things like full day K and, and special ed services. But our staffing is actually down ten staff members for three hundred and fourteen students since fourteen fifteen, roughly one teaching position for every thirty students we lose. And, you know, again, in spite of adding significant special education programming. So our per pupil expenditure, I talked about how that impacts us. The Cheshire per pupil expenditure in eighteen nineteen was sixteen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. The state average seventeen thousand for a net difference. We spend nine hundred and twenty-five dollars less per student than the state average, and we rank a hundred and twenty-two out of a hundred and sixty-six Connecticut school districts. The year prior, we were ranked a hundred nineteenth. And you can kind of get a sense of the, the range with Sharon spending thirty-six thousand per student and Danbury at thirteen, three. So Durg B, I talked about us in like, like districts, and how does our spending compare to the similar communities to Cheshire? The Durg B average is almost eighteen thousand dollars. So if we spent the average amount of money that a Durg B school system spends per pupil, our budget would increase by six million dollars per year if we spent the average. South Windsor and Granby, Granby are the two school systems who spend a little bit less than Cheshire does. But you can see the rest of Durg B indicated in that slide. That being said, we have a tremendous return on investment. Consider, you know, the Consider, you know, the SAT score to really be the only apples-to-apples comparison we have of every other community across Connecticut, as well as we have the per pupil expenditure. So dividing that out in terms of SAT performance relative to the per pupil expenditure, we rank tenth in Connecticut. Our S-Back performance, again, you know, I, I really don't believe that testing is the end-all, be-all for our students, but it's the only metric that I have that I can compare how did we do relative to other school systems in Connecticut. And when you look at our three-through-eight S-Back performance, it shatters our previous performance. We're ranked thirteenth in Connecticut for math. We're ranked ninth in the state for English Language Arts. When you average those two rankings together for the districts that have both of those, we are the fifth-best performance of any K-12 school system in Connecticut. Fifth best is really fairly impressive. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah. And, you know, I, I did want to say that with that, we should be very proud of that. And that's, that's really a reflection of our, our students who come prepared to learn and are engaged in the process, our families who support them in that process and make sure that our kids come to school ready to learn and prioritize education. Certainly, our teachers and staff. But I also want to acknowledge our many administrators who are in the room today who really helped make that success possible for our kids. So thank you guys very much for all the tireless work that you do. Our special education performance, we think it's really important that all students find success. Our fifteen, sixteen, we were ranked twenty-fourth in Connecticut for English Language Arts. We're currently ranked seventh. In math, we were ranked twenty-ninth. We're currently ranked eleventh. So it's not just our students who've always found success that are being successful. It's all of our students. And we talk about making that investment for our students with, you know, identified needs. Those investments and that effort are paying incredible dividends for those kids and providing them greater success. So when you look at Connecticut, like we just did for general education, for only special education students, and you look at the rank, again, we're fifth-best in Connecticut in that respect, too. So, you know, again, just to restate, you know, I, I believe that we provide an excellent value for our community, that we also have multiple elementary schools that are Connecticut schools of distinction. We are annually recognized as a top community for music in, in America. Ninety-three percent of our high school students participate in extracurricular activities. Our athletic program is, for six consecutive years, won the Connecticut Interscholastic Athletic Conference Michael's Cup for their overall success in programming. And we have the best, the top-best buddies chapter in the state of Connecticut. That's something that we're also incredibly proud of. Our AP National Merit Scholarship information, you know, obviously there, we, we continue to be very successful as well at the high school level. And I, I, you know, as I start to, to close here, I know, please don't say thank God out loud. As I start to close here, I, I would just want to remind people that investing in our schools is really an investment in our community. It's, this is an investment in Cheshire. Cheshire has a lot to offer, but I really, I, I know an incredible number of people move here for our school system, and half the home-buying population is willing to pay more than their intended budget to get into the right school district, and more than half would give up other amenities per Realtor.com. And, you know, why would I invest in schools? I don't have kids that attend the schools. It's, you're missing the big picture. Duke Urban Economics, they reviewed a, a number of, of research papers that talked about the value of education on community. And in conclusion, they said, as each of these papers has shown, the quality of school has a positive impact on the prices of house located within that school attendant zone. This finding is not only important to homeowners and parents, but also economists and policymakers because it has been found that better-quality schools increase the real estate value of houses in their area. Improving schools can be a method for improving neighborhoods and stimulating economic growth. As our data would show, I mean, we're always trying to improve and get better, but we've done a tremendous job improving our schools. So key takeaways, you know, the initial budget request of over seven has been aggressively reviewed to present a conscientious and prioritize four percent request. CPS is an outstanding value, spending, you know, six million dollars less than our peers. Nevertheless, that, that doesn't compromise our results. We do a tremendous job. The addition of one certified position in special education to address needs at the elementary and post-secondary levels is a, a key part of this. The nearly seven IAs hired during this year are included as a factor in this budget. There's a modest increase in building operation and maintenance funding and that was requested to, to address our infrastructure needs. The underfunded commitments, particularly as it relates to medical benefits, is a significant portion of our, our increase. And the IAs meant to address security is one of the few enhancements that we've included. So this is one of my, this is probably my favorite part of the whole show here, that we get to do a shout-out. This is the artistic genius of first grader Aubrey Ignatowski at Highland Elementary School. So that is just cool. It happens to be the cover of our, our budget book this year, and I just want to congratulate her on having that artwork selected. So it, so yeah, thank you. She deserves that. She deserves that. And in closing, you know, I, I spoke about this a little bit earlier, but I want to acknowledge that our success is a combination of the efforts of a lot of people, outstanding educators, committed parents and community, and of course, our, our students are awesome. And they do incredible things, whether it be Aubrey's artwork, or academics, or athletics, or music, or, they're so talented, and they're really the reason we come every morning. So our budget calendar moving forward, we will have a public budget review, which we really get into the weeds about a lot of what we do, and do an administrative review of accounts starting next Tuesday. We do have a, a, a business meeting where we aren't addressing the budget next Thursday. And then the twenty-first, we start to get back into the reviews of accounts with a special education presentation, and we'll continue to, to debate the budget moving throughout the month, hopefully, as I said, to settle something by February fifteenth. So with that, I thank you for your time and attention. It's, I can't ask for this kind of money in twenty minutes, so I appreciate you sitting through the, the whole background. Thank you very much.
Before we move on to public comment, I just want to take a moment to thank Superintendent Solan, Vincent Manciana, your staff, all the administrators, and all the folks that seem to spend a great deal of time providing the administration information to the budget. Know it's a lot of work. Every year, we, as a board, get to go through a lot of the information. And you should know that we also take a look at what you requested, perhaps didn't make it in there. And I assure you this year, we'll do the same. So having said that, before I turn over to public comment, do the board members have any questions? Or, I know Tim's probably going to have a question. But if there's any initial questions to the superintendent, certainly ask now, reminding us that we have the next three weeks to really dive into it, but if there's any initial... That's great. Public comment, we didn't have an issue in agenda before the meetings, after the meeting started, we took a vote and added it, because I know we have folks here tonight that have some things they want to talk to about the board. If you would like to speak to the board, if you have an idea, comment, concern, if it's related to the budget or not, you're certainly welcome to do so at the podium. If you do come to the podium, just do know it is about a three-minute timeline per speaker, and we'll try to accommodate as many folks as we can this evening. So if anyone wants, wants to speak with us, please do. Sorry, Tim has a question.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, come up, I think this will be quick. For Jeff, when you were going through there, I may have misread this. You had, I thought you had mentioned, so you had a list of additions you were asking for, and I think a few of them were listed in terms of FTEs. The hall monitors, was that two FTE hall monitors that you wanted?
Yes, the one at each building.
Okay.
Any other board member questions? Apologize, we now open this up to the public. So if anyone wants to come to the microphone, you're welcome to do so. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Natali Di Natali, and I want to thank you for allowing public comment tonight. My request tonight is that the Board of Ed include funding for girls' ice hockey in its budget. We have a number of girls here tonight from the team. Some of them are going to speak, but I figure we save the best for last. So I'm going to go first. My daughter Nadia is a senior at Cheshire High School and a member of the Cheshire Ice Hockey Club Team. She has been for four years. Next year, she's going to college, so she won't be able to participate. She'll play at Villanova in their program. So if you decide to vote in favor of funding, we won't benefit. But nevertheless, I'm here tonight because I, I think that funding girls' hockey is the right thing for our community. As a part of the Cheshire community, I, I think you know that ice hockey is part of our culture. Cheshire's had a strong ice hockey tradition for decades, and boys from Cheshire have gone on to play ice hockey in college and even in the NHL. What's different about the decades of tradition is that ice hockey is not just for boys anymore. More and more girls are playing ice hockey. For girls, ice hockey is one of the fastest-growing youth sports in the country. All around us, more and more towns in Connecticut, the towns that Mr. Solan, Superintendent Solan mentioned in his presentation that are similarly situated to us, are funding and sponsoring girls' ice hockey programs. They're recognizing that, that girls play ice hockey, but Cheshire is lagging behind. You're going to hear again from our girls' team tonight about why, a lot of the reasons why they believe that hockey should be funded. The perspective I'd like to bring tonight is one that comes from the fact that I'm a lawyer. I apologize for that, please don't hold it against me. But in reviewing this issue, I've examined the question of Title IX compliance. On the surface, Cheshire appears to offer equal opportunity, fifteen sports for boys, fifteen sports for girls. The problem is that when you do more than scratch the surface, you'll see that Cheshire very likely has a Title IX problem. The reason is that Cheshire counts cheerleading as a sport. Now, I have nothing against cheerleading, nothing at all. It's a great activity. But the law could not be clearer that schools are not permitted to count cheerleading when determining Title IX compliance. For the record, again, that's not my legal conclusion. It's the conclusion of Judge Underhill, a federal district court judge in the District of Connecticut. In a case involving Quinnipiac University, he concluded that competitive cheer could not be counted as a sport for Title IX compliance. Again, not my opinion, the law. Furthermore, that decision was upheld by the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, which is just one step removed from our U.S. Supreme Court. On this issue, even USA Cheer acknowledges that the Office of Civil Rights has not certified traditional cheerleading as counting as an interscholastic sport at the high school level in any state. And it's their position that traditional cheerleading, sometimes called competitive cheer by schools, does not count as an interscholastic sport for Title IX purposes. According to USA Cheer, several states have been subjected to litigation over this issue for falsifying their Title IX participation numbers by counting traditional cheerleading as a varsity sport without OCR approval, even when termed competitive cheer. Yet, Cheshire, the Cheshire community counts cheer as a sport, and it does so twice, once in the fall and once in the winter. And just go on the website and you can see that. But I get away from the point. Our community loves ice hockey. Our town has even funded and maintains an outdoor rink of sorts. But why do we continue with the false assumption that ice hockey is a boy's sport? It's time for our community to shed itself of that stereotype. Year after year, our girls enroll in ice hockey. Let's catch up with the times and recognize that fact. I understand that hockey costs money. I tried to do the math when you're presenting your budget. I think the funding for girls' ice hockey would probably be less than one one-hundredth of a percent of the budget, but, but it's been a while since I've been in school. Not an accountant. But in any event, cost is not an excuse to allow this unfairness to continue. Hockey is expensive. It's one of the more expensive sports. But it's, it's as expensive for the boys, or maybe more expensive for the boys, than it would be to fund for the girls. We wouldn't think of discontinuing hockey for boys because it's expensive. But yet, we choose to use that as an excuse with the girls. Ice hockey is part of our culture in Cheshire, and I ask you to treat our girls equally. I ask you to fund girls' ice hockey. I'm glad to answer any questions you may have. I do have copies of Judge Underhill's decision and the Second Circuit Court of Appeals decision, if you'd like. I'm glad to submit them for you and provide them to you. And there's a lot of resources available on this issue. I'm glad to follow up. May I approach and...
Yeah, so if you don't mind, you can definitely give him the carol, we'll distribute it. Oh, I appreciate the handouts. And I have to apologize, I didn't hear your name when you announced it earlier. No disrespect.
And address? Do we ask for a dress?
It's optional.
My, my name is Natali Di Natali. I am a Cheshire resident.
Natali Di Natali.
Natali Di Natali.
I thought it was...
Yeah, I wasn't stuttering.
No, 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 I wasn't...
You're not the first to be confused. I'm glad to answer any questions. Otherwise, all stars of the show are behind me.
No, it's one of those, Di Natali, thank you for coming up tonight, and, and thank you for the girls coming tonight, too. I'm sure we'll hear from them, too. I, I could tell you that the board, some board members have heard from various supporters in the community about girls' ice hockey. In fact, I'd like to say that David Velber brought it to our attention not too long ago, actually, just before November. And I know Superintendent Solan has conversed with a couple of parents. There is some, some information that you sent out, they could probably make available to you as well. We haven't had a formal discussion on the board yet about girls' hockey, but there's also a number of other sports and clubs also have similar interests. So I think now that it's this budget process, probably a good time to take a look at that, what is the driving factor as to why we can't include all the folks in this process? So we're certainly happy to read all the information you've given us. I don't have an immediate response. I guess a quick, quick question I have for you is, is how, how many, how many folks do we have on the girls' hockey team? What's the usual participation...
So we have, we're, Cheshire participates in a co-op. The town of Amity High School has the team. I believe we have seven girls this year from Cheshire. And that number has varied over the years. It used to be a long time ago that if you were a girl and you played ice hockey, you went to a prep school. Why? Because there weren't a lot of girls playing hockey. But ice hockey for girls has grown so much that it's part of our community. And we have a lot of girls who have either played and want to continue to play in high school, a lot of girls who are new to the sport, who want to play in hockey. And we have a lot of girls, unfortunately, who have played youth hockey, then get to high school and see the bill that they're going to face, and then they put it aside and they don't play. And I, and, and my daughters played with a lot of girls in youth hockey who just, who were classmates of hers, who, who just never played hockey in Cheshire because of the cost.
So that was our next question. Do you feel that, you know, if cost was not prohibitive, there'd be more girls interested?
So, you know, I don't know. We've had a good turnout this year, seven. In the past, there was three. I think we would have more. Woodbridge, the town, Amity School District funds ice hockey to some degree. I don't know the exact descent of it. I could find out, but they do fund it. they do fund it. Yet, they, we participate on a team, on a team with them, right?
Sure.
So, you know, so they've seen bigger numbers, but not enough to fill out an entire team. So my, my anticipation would be that Cheshire would continue to be part of the co-op as we move forward, you know, and which holds down the cost considerably because Amity does not practice five days a week like our boys do, or like many other school girls' programs do. We have about three sheets of ice a week, so they, the girls practice, and they'll correct me if I'm wrong, they practice twice, twice per week, and then they have a game during the week, sometimes two. So being part of that co-op helps keep those costs down.
Sure.
You know, whereas Madison is on the ice every day. And again, that's one of the schools in our, in our district. They go to Northridge, they're on the ice every day. That would be great in the future, but, you know, right now, we're just asking for a start.
Sounds to be very pragmatic about it, which I very appreciate it. Are there any, I saw some hands. I think, go ahead, Faith.
Do you have a, a projected budget or, you had some numbers you were trying to calculate?
Yeah, so I was trying to calculate it. So Sep, so the, what we're charged, we pay the full cost, and we're charged upfront $1,800. The actual cost is less than that. So at the end of last year, we were refunded some of that because we are charged the actual cost. So if the costs come in less because of increased participation, or because we didn't have as many bus trips, or because, you know, we didn't get charged, the cost comes down. And so, assume it's $1,200, after the girls would pay a participation fee of $325, which is what the boys pay. The boys pay a participation fee for ice hockey of, I believe, $325. $225? $225? Okay. So $1,300 times seven, less than $10,000. Yes. It's, it's around that figure.
Any other questions from the board members? Thank you, Mr. Di Natali. I will, I'm not sure which of the budget previews we're going to dive into some of the costs for sports and co-ops, but if you're willing to leave your email address to me, I'll, we'll shoot you on email in case you want to come into that meeting and a little more detail.
I would absolutely be willing to do so and participate.
We're certainly open to discussing it. There's no question there.
Tribute whatever I can to the process.
Appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, everybody. Yes.
Okay. Hi. My name is Nadia Di Natali, and I am a senior at Cheshire High School. I've been playing ice hockey since I was seven, and I've been on the Blades Girls' Ice Hockey Team since I was a freshman. Last year, which was my junior year, I did a project on Title IX, the law that bans discrimination based on sex. While doing this project, I learned a lot about the law itself, but also made me reflect on the Blades Hockey Program, which is not funded by Cheshire High School. In addition to completing a project on Title IX, I wrote a letter regarding the issue to my principal, Dr. Gad. I also created a petition for girls' ice hockey to be recognized as a sport rather than a club and funded by the school. In just two days, 320 of my classmates signed this petition. Next, I met with Dr. Gad and my athletic director, Mr. Trefon. They both wanted to fit girls' ice hockey into the budget and told me the next step was to talk to you, the Board of Ed. I'm going to discuss several very good reasons for the Board to fund and recognize girls' hockey, but the most compelling is that it's the right and fair thing to do. It is true that only seven players from Cheshire are involved in girls' hockey. However, this is not because of lack of numbers or lack of interest. This year, many girls came up to me wanting to play, but when they found out how expensive it was, they realized that they were not able to join the team. Former girls' ice hockey players have also come up to me explaining that they had to discontinue playing ice hockey because their families are unable to afford it. It costs $1,800 for a girl to play, but it only costs $225 for a boy. The decision of whether or not to play hockey in high school shouldn't in no way be based on a family's financial status. That is not the case for the boys' ice hockey team, so why is it okay for the girls? Did you know that Cheshire High School is behind other towns in Connecticut on the subject of funding girls' ice hockey? Eighty percent of towns like Cheshire offer girls' ice hockey, and most of these towns fund girls' ice hockey. These towns includes, include Orange, Woodbridge, Madison, Bethany, Guilford, Newtown, and more. However, in Cheshire, girls' ice hockey is a club, not a sport, and the Athletic Department does not fund the Blades. Why should we be the town that lags behind in not only funding girls' ice hockey, but in gender equality? My teammates and I are well aware that the boys are given far more benefits than us, including buses to games and buses to practice five times a week. The Blades can only afford two practices a week and three buses a season. My teammates and I practice and work just as hard as the boys, which paid off as we won the 2019 SCC Tournament. Despite everything we put in, we can't earn a varsity letter, and we are not recognized in the yearbook at all until last year. This is in no way fair. The severity of this gender issue did not strike me until last winter, around the same time that I began my project on Title IX. Last hockey season, I heard that Cheshire Sport offered free skate sharpening to the Cheshire hockey players, but when I went to get my skate sharpen there, I found out that this was a deal for the boys, not the girls. Although I'm a senior this year and will no longer be playing for the Blades next year, I'm speaking today because I don't want my younger teammates to have that same experience, being treated differently just because they're girls. Throughout Cheshire public schools, we are taught that women are equal to men, and that women have the same rights as men. Why then are my teammates and I treated lesser than the boys? Why are we not equal to the boys in our own school? The lack of funds towards girls' hockey speaks louder than words, and these past four years, I have found that my own town believes that there is a difference between when a girl steps on the ice and when a boy steps on the ice. Ice hockey is not just a boy's sport anymore. Times have changed, but in Cheshire, we have failed to recognize that change. This is a chance for you to help make this right, and I urge you to support my position on this very important issue. Thank you.
Hello. I have a diagram for you guys, if you'd like to take one. Megan Coyle. Dear members of the Board of Education, Mr. Solan, the Town Council, and the Cheshire Community, my name is Megan Coyle. I'm 14 years old and new, new to public speaking. As a freshman at Cheshire High School, I am very passionate about my education, representing my high school Go Rams in ice hockey. Today, in the year 2020, in the hometown of NHL Hall of Famers Brian Leach, I'm surprised I must address the unequal treatment of female CHS ice hockey athletes. So I now follow in the footsteps, or should I say skates. Of my fellow team members that I have shared the same concern with CHS, Mr. Solan, and the Board of Education numerous times over the years, let me say that I'm very grateful to you for allowing me the opportunity to be a member of the Blades, a co-op girls' ice hockey team that is made up of impressively talented female players from Cheshire, Amity, and North Haven High Schools. Although only existence for five years, the Blades have won two Southern Connecticut Conferences, and we are currently prepared to do it again this year. Our emblem illustrated on my jersey ties CHS, Amity, and North Haven together as one. As such, I am not only proud to be a member of the Blades, but more honored to finally represent my school in doing so. Supported by Cheshire Assistant Coach Ms. Kate Cordo, we are also bound to follow the CHS' Athletic or Extracurricular Activity Handbook on How to Conduct Ourselves. Although CHS considers us a club team, we play against normal high school teams for Hammaden, Simsbury, Notre Dame, Fairfield, Guilford, ETC. Our sister school, Amity, who represents most of the players financially support their female players by requiring only activity fee of $250, whereas Cheshire requires payment of $1,800 per player. It is six times more than what CHS boys' hockey players pay, which is the activity fee of $225. In addition, the boys' team receives full transportation to all games and practices at Wesleyan. We have found that the exuberant fee has turned many potential female players away when nationally girls' ice hockey is growing in popularity. Below is a breakdown of how CHS supports their ice hockey athletes. I ask, is this fair? For boys' ice hockey for CHS, they have to pay $22500, and for girls' ice hockey, we have to pay $1,800. The transportation for boys' ice hockey, CHS provides bus transportation to all practices at Wesleyan and to all games during the weekend/weekend. For transportation for CHS girls' ice hockey, parent must drive players to all games and practices, with the exception of four required games in which Amity picks up the busing. But if the bus is not coming all the, through Cheshire, parents must drive students to Amity/North Haven to catch it. Our impression for the boys' ice hockey, a highly valued CHS athlete and team. Our impression for only a club team, no value to CHS or community. Most people aren't even aware this is a team. Impact for CHS girls' ice hockey. Impressions are hard, hurt hard, and it make a lasting impact on students' morale. In turn, it makes us stronger because we are willing to stand up for justice. Number two, lack of transportation jeopardizes the job/income of parents who are forced to leave work early, or take a half-day so that players can get to a game slash practice. It is a constant race to try to be on time. Number three, huge financial burden on families who want to support their daughter goal by representing their school. Sadly, for several years, players and their family have heard numerous reasons why Mr. Solan, CHS, and the Board of Education can't or won't support their female ice hockey athletes. Some examples that have filtered down to us are, there is no money in the budget this year, at least for the last three years. It's considered a club team so that the school can avoid Title IX issues. There are not enough players to make a full team, so it will remain a club. Only club teams will want to be recognized if we agree to support girls' ice hockey. Number five, they are lucky that we even offer them a club team, said by a member in this room. If a policy appears to favor one group over another, if the policy appears to be unbalanced or unfair or worse, the policy appears to be sexist, then the policy is inherently wrong and should be revised for equality. If there is no room in the budget, or there is no financial support made by the Town Council for your girls' ice hockey athletes, then level the playing field, or should I say ice, and balance the activity dues for all CHS hockey players, male or female. Balancing the cost of support among all students would be fair and just. Members of the Board of Education, as you prepare next year's budget, we hope that you will consider Mr. Solan's current decision not to financially support your female ice hockey athletes. Understand that we are very proud to represent our school and our community. No matter where we go and what name we go by, we are your students, your daughters, your team, and your future. Before I leave, may I ask you to ponder over the following questions? Would your actions today be any different if your own daughter stood here wanting to play ice hockey for CHS? How would you react as a female athlete to the current policy of inequality? And would you also be pressed to see equality of both male and female students, players, in your school? Thank you very much for your time and this opportunity to voice our concerns.
Just before next speaker goes up, I do realize that speakers are going over a three-minute mark, and I'm perfectly okay with that. We don't have a long line of folks, and it's clear, clear that these girls put a lot of time and effort. So unless the Board has objections, I don't mind going past the three-minute limit, so. Seeing there's none, please continue on. Anna, it's okay.
Um, my name's Anna Lindner.
And I'm Avery Depesta.
We just wanted to come out here and say that we're very passionate on hockey. I know for me personally, I just started playing this season, and it's like one of my new favorite sports. I mean, I was lucky enough to have the money to afford to play, but I know there's other, one of my best friends, Lauren, could not play this season because of the cost, and she's hopefully wanting to play next season if she can afford it. But I know lowering the costs would certainly help persuade her parents more. And I know there's other friends, like our friends in that same position, that would love to play ice hockey but don't have the ability to do that yet. So we're very fortunate to be in that position, to have the ability to have, to play ice hockey all the time. But it would be much more, it would be nicer if we could make that available for other girls who would love to play just as much as we would. Okay, um, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Yeah. Natali Di Natali, Adam has a question, and I think Catherine also may have a question in general, and then I don't know if you had your hand up or not, but we'll entertain questions.
Hi. Thanks for presenting this evening. So you currently have seven young women on your team, and you're a co-op.
Correct.
What would happen if you became a team? Do you not participate in the co-op anymore? Or how would that work exactly?
You know, it's, it's, I would not envision that. The co-op consists of three towns, and the numbers have fluctuated over the years. And the towns that are included are Cheshire, North Haven, and Amity. Amity, of course, includes five towns, or three towns, or whatever it is. And despite the fact that Amity funds the ice hockey, they do not field a full team. And yes, the numbers fluctuate. Last year, we had, for each of my daughter's first three years playing, we had three girls from Cheshire. This year, we've got seven. So I think the numbers will tend to fluctuate. They've fluctuated in North Haven, they fluctuate in, in Amity. I would anticipate that we would continue to be part of the co-op. I'm certainly not advocating anything different. Again, my daughter will not be part of that team next year. She'll be in college, but that, that's not the suggestion that we're coming forward with, or at least I'm coming forward with for you tonight. Catherine.
I just wanted to clarify something about the, the cost differential between male and female. The $1,800 that you're talking about is the cost that, that isn't something that the Board of Ed charges as a student activity fee.
So, so the way it works is, as the way I understand it works, and Mr. Trefon would, would be a better resource on this, is that Amity calculates the cost. There is a certain cost for a number of sheets of ice per week. We have practices and games, and then we have buses. And the buses, as one of the girls referenced, go from, you know, different towns and stop, and sometimes we have to go to North Haven or Amity, or sometimes it swings by Cheshire. And so the, the $1,800 is what Amity calculates as the cost per participant, actual cost per participant, of ice hockey, refs, ice, coaches, buses, all of those things. In the past, I was provided with a worksheet that broke all of that down. I may have that in my papers here, but, but I think Mr. Trefon was, would probably be a much better, you can tell me if I'm being, if I'm, have I misstated anything, Mr. Trefon? Okay. And so then, they send that information to Mr. Trefon, and then sends that on to us. What he has done to help us deal with the cost is present us with the bill upfront so that we can pay it in payment, so it's not a surprise at the end of the year. So we are scheduled to make three payments of $600 each at different intervals, and then at the end, if the calculated cost is different, Mr. Trefon, through the athletic office, sort of administers that, and then in the past, I believe has refunded us. I don't remember exactly what it was, but he has refunded us for part of the cost because it hasn't quite come out to $1,800.
Right. So just as a follow-up, because I'm a little dense here tonight.
No, I'm probably not being clear.
No, no, no. So if there was, if this became a sport, you know, a sanctioned sport, would those fees still be charged? I'm trying to understand.
So the way that.
But maybe we don't have to get into the details really, but.
Yeah, so the way that, if this became a, a sport, then what I would, what I would hope for is that the girls would be charged the same participation fee for hockey that the boys are charged. The participation fee for most sports, I think, is $125, but because of hockey, it's, it's more. So, you know, th- So, you know, that would be what I would hope, that we would do that. To us, I think that would be a home run for us to get that funding, or a hat trick, let me say. So that would be the idea, is that the Board of Ed would absorb the remainder of that cost. So if the actual cost was sixteen hundred dollars, then the board's cost would be thirteen seventy-five, because we will have paid the two hundred and twenty-five.
Thank you, thanks for clarifying.
Anne.
So I don't have a question so much as, I just want to commend these bright young women for coming and speaking to us tonight. This is a true example of the type of students that we encourage here in Cheshire Public Schools. And this is the kind of homework we expect from our students to provide us with the accurate and thorough information. And I just want to say, you go, girls! And keep your voices out there, and keep your voices strong, no matter what the outcome happens to be, because we will be going through a very thorough budget process to come. But it's impressive to hear your voices, and so please, keep it up. Thank you.
I think Mr. Solan might want to say something, but before I turn over, there might be one more. Martha, did you want to say something? While you make your way up, I also want to reiterate what Anna just said. You all did a fantastic job. Obviously, you did your homework, you're passionate about this, it was very eloquent, very concise, efficient. I appreciate, speaking of all the board, obviously, your passion shows, you put a lot of thought and effort into this, and the board will certainly take this on a serious consideration. And I just ask that the Finance Committee, as part of the budget process, you know, spend, you know, some point in one of those workshops, a little deep dive on the fees, because there's other organizations that contribute fees to also offset some of the costs. And I think a little bit of transparency, and we just talked about these fees in terms of ref breakdown, ice time, coaches, bus expenses, kind of see how that relates to the other fees that are being covered from external sources. So in the name of transparency, it'd be a good discussion topic to go there. And I can't make any promises, but I do promise that the board will look into this, and will keep you apprised as we move forward. But again, thank you so much for your efforts. It's very well done, very well organized. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Martha Lindner, and I'm a hockey mom in Cheshire. I have a son, Mark, who's a junior on the hockey team. And my daughter Anna is in the white sweater she spoke tonight. She's a sophomore. What happened this spring, my son came to hockey very late. He started, switched from baseball to hockey at like twelve and a half. And I don't know how we did it, but he made the high school hockey team in ninth grade. So he's passionate about hockey, and for years, Anna's been going to all these hockey games. And for the last couple of years, she's been saying to me, I want to play, I want to play, and we kept saying, yeah, right, right. You know, like, Mark started late, you're not starting at fifteen. And, you know, I just didn't think she was serious. And fast forward to this fall, we had French Foreign Exchange student for two weeks. He left, we were exhausted. Twenty-four hours after he leaves, she comes downstairs after dinner, and she said, I need twenty minutes of your undivided attention. And we're like, okay, what happened? Why, our student was here. So she pulls out her Chromebook, and she's got a PowerPoint presentation. And she proceeds to go on and explain exactly how she's going to play hockey at Cheshire High School. And not only that, Nadia, her senior friend, was going to drive her, because she drives right by her house. I won't have to drive her anywhere. She had figured all these things out. I'm going to borrow equipment from all of Mark's friends. You won't have to buy me equipment. I mean, she had this all figured out, and the whole time, I'm thinking, nope, 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 not doing it. And I knew about the fee, I knew about the eighteen hundred dollars. And I'm all ready to say no, and it was my husband who finally looked at me and said, how can we say no to her? We've been supporting Mark all these years, it's an expensive sport, she wants to try it. And so we're doing it, and she's loving it, and the camaraderie is awesome. But what upsets me the most about all this is it's making it a sport in Cheshire that you can only do it if you have the money. And that upsets me to my core, that it's a have or haven't hot situation. If you have money, you can play hockey. And that bothers me so much. And that shouldn't be the case, because I know there's some kids that want to play that just can't afford it. And there's people in the middle, I mean, I didn't think we could afford it. I thought it was kind of nuts. But, you know, you pick and choose what you can and can't do. But I know there's a lot more out there that probably would if they could, and I feel really bad about that. And when I know what we do for the boys, because I see my son getting bused five days a week, it just doesn't seem right in two thousand twenty that we're having this conversation. I'm blown away. So I would seriously consider, and I think it's awesome to have Natali here too this year at our disposal for the lawyer background in terms of what's really legally right here. But please give it serious consideration, because I think it's insane in this day and age that we're even having this conversation. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Martha. It's just, Martha's actually a longtime neighbor, and I'm not surprised that Anna's playing hockey, considering that she takes Mark to task on your front lawn when they're practicing the hockey net. So, and I also want to say, Anna did a phenomenal job tonight, so again, thank you, and thank you for speaking up.
I really wanted to start by echoing Ms. Harrigan's comments about how proud I am of our students and their capacity to advocate themselves. Hockey shaped a great deal of my life, and I appreciate what it means to be a part of, not just be a hockey player, but be a part of a team and a bigger hockey community. And I really, you know, impressed but not surprised by the way that you guys were able to articulate yourself, and should be very proud of yourself. As, you know, Mr. Perrigini said, this budget process is a lot of difficult decisions. And, you know, that my heart is certainly in hockey, and I, again, just really appreciate what you've done tonight to advocate for yourself and demonstrate, you know, what it means to be on the Blades team and what it means to be a hockey player in our community. So, great job, girls.
I'm sorry, there's a question from Madam Gribble to Mr. Massien.
Well, it was, I'm sure maybe you were expecting, perhaps a request. When the Finance Committee meets, when we discuss this portion of the budget, if we could get a breakdown of the, I guess, the cost of instituting a new team, or the cost of what the school system contributes to each team, or to get a breakdown to know, because I'm not sure when the last time we actually incorporated a new team for the school system, but to find out what our obligations are once we institute a team, to sort of get a full appreciation as to what that would be, because I think this inevitably would lead to additional requests. So it'd be good to know what exactly we're looking at if we were to add an additional team or additional teams. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, before I adjourn, I'm going to read off the upcoming meetings, which you certainly don't have to listen through that. I know it's a school night, you probably want to get back. So thank you again. Upcoming meetings, I'll start with the budget process in particular. January fourteenth at seven PM at Dobb Middle School is a public budget review, administrative review of accounts. January sixteenth, in Town Council's chamber, at seven thirty PM is a regular board business meeting. January twenty-third, Dobb Middle School, seven PM, another administration review of accounts. And, I'm sorry, just January twenty-first. January twenty-third, Dobb Middle School, public informational meeting, board member responses to superintendent budget, adoption of a Board of Education budget if possible. And January twenty-eighth, January twenty-eighth, at seven thirty, at Dobb Middle School, special meeting of Board of Education to formally adopt a Board of Education budget. And just some, quickly, these administrative account review meetings are very interactive. It's not just slides, there are actually color-coded presentations in PowerPoint that Mr. Massien puts together, will be available. So if you can attend, I encourage you to do so. Public is allowed to ask questions with the Finance Committee as we move along through those discussions. It is very informative. All the material will be on our school website, the evening or the day after the meeting, as well as the information that was shared tonight. Lastly, upcoming Board of Education meetings. We have one in January sixteenth at seven thirty in Town Council Chamber. January twenty-first at six PM, we have a Legislative Committee meeting. This is a Board of Education Legislative Committee meeting. Monday, January twenty-seventh at six thirty, we have a Policy Committee meeting in the Humiston Boardroom. Monday, February tenth at seven PM is Curriculum Committee meeting in the Humiston Boardroom. And Thursday, February twentieth at seven thirty, if you are planning that far in advance, seven thirty PM at the Board of Education here in Town Hall. All of this is published on our Board of Education calendar on the school website. I, Mary, I will allow you to address the board. I, please do.
Mary Burnham, forty-five, Tress. I want to thank the board, some of you know me, some of you don't, for your trying to involve the public. I also want to thank some of you and encourage some of you who are not. I started a group on Facebook a couple of years ago. Some of you participate, and I encourage more of you to participate, because I think it has really, I know Tim mentioned something on it the other day, and I thought it was really good discussion. So it's Cheshire CT Education. And I try to, I'm the only administrator, and I don't let nasty things go in there. But I really do encourage conversation. I know Faith posted something about inviting people to come meet with her on Saturday, I think. So anyway, I encourage anybody to join, because really, it's to have education issues brought before the, you know, so we can talk as a community about all kinds of issues. If administrators want to join, you don't have to say anything, but you might want to look at what people are saying. Because, well, I know who's on there, because I have to approve you. So at any rate, but I encourage membership, and please come, just, even if you don't want to participate, I've learned a whole lot about this community and what parents and people in the community feel about education, so. And I thank the board for opening up and being more transparent. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Burnham. Regarding board member activity and social media in general, just, I don't think it's a case where, I can't speak for all board members, but we've been through the training over the years. There's strict FOIA laws, in particular, about a quorum of anybody being on a single post topic. So four of us chimed in on Tim's thread, proceeded a little meeting, and then, you know, we had the lawyers come after us. So it's not, I don't think it's a matter of folks not wanting to be engaged. We're trying to be very careful that we don't put ourselves in trouble. By no means does that mean we're not paying attention, not just on that forum, but others. But to the extent possible, we'll try to be pretty, you know, good about that. And it's, board members as individuals can still reach out to the community as they see fit. But, you know, I just want to say, board education business is conducted here, not on the forums. But we do listen, I know you know that, but just folks that we have, folks here tonight watching, so, point taken. Thank you. And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Tim? Any seconds? Faith? All those in favor? Is unanimous? Thank you, and good evening.